Called the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2024-01 for January 2, 2024. Those like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but to the righteous path, for thine is the kingdom, for our Lord and forever. Amen.
The United States of America, and the free and equal opportunity of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Containing motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
Move.
Second. Any discussions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried, consent agenda is approved. Now first we have a proclamation to recognize the Mardella High Unified Tennis Team State Championship, am I right? If you want, come up out the podium here, James is going to read the proclamation. Everybody.
Come on up.
And if anybody wants to take pictures, you can come all the way up here, you're not going to be interrupting anything at all. You can come right here and make sure you get the shot that you want.
Awesome, got the whole team.
State championship, James.
Should I move to the podium a little bit? We can get on this side a little bit if you want. Come on over here. Come on over. This is great, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, well let's read this sucker. Okay. It is my, it is with great pleasure that the county executive and the members of the Wycomico County Council extend this certificate of recognition to the Mardella High School Unified Tennis Team for winning 2023 state championships. We congratulate you with your accomplishments. Thanks. I think, I think we should probably get in a line so we can get a picture. Should we get in front? Would that be better? Do you guys like to just step back farther a little bit? That way we can get everything here. Should people be getting in front?
Thank you.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
Here you go, my face is ready.
Can you hear everyone, mind your voice? Yes, you're good. You're good. All right. Do they even want to say anything there? No? All right, well we appreciate it. All right, who wants to say something? There you go. Thank you so much, thank you all.
Next we have a proclamation to recognize the month of January as National Human Trafficking Month. Ms. Danielle Thomas of the Life Crisis Center is here. Good evening. And Shani Shields is going to read, Shani's going to read the proclamation from the, from where she is right here, okay?
On the Proclamation for Human Trafficking Prevention Month, whereas human trafficking is a serious problem on the Eastern Shore where traffickers use violence, threats, and other manipulative tactics to force and coerce young and adult individuals to engage in commercial sex acts or to provide labor or services against their will. And whereas there have been reports of child sex trafficking in every Eastern Shore county since 2013, and 127 human trafficking victims have been rescued throughout Maryland. And whereas the Eastern Shore Human Trafficking Task Force is engaged in actions by encouraging and promoting awareness and prevention of human trafficking. And whereas January is Human Trafficking Prevention Month, which recognizes that human trafficking consistently occurs throughout the United States and emphasizes the need to focus on prevention, prosecution, partnerships, and support for the survivors. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wycomico County Executive and the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaim January as Human Trafficking Prevention Month in Wycomico County. Wycomico County Executive and the Wycomico County Council. Danielle.
Okay.
You can make a comment up to the podium.
Good evening. On behalf of Life Crisis Center and the Eastern Shore Human Trafficking Task Force, I just wanted to say thank you guys for this recognition. We are definitely out here doing a lot of work in regards to specifically child sex trafficking and being able to provide that prevention and that support that's desperately needed, not just here in Wycomico County, but throughout our country, absolutely. So again, thank you guys so much, we really appreciate this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is it okay?
Just told I didn't want to. I just told I didn't want to. That's all right. My daughter.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next proclamation we have is the, to recognize the month of January as National Mentoring Month. We have Ms. Kiana Bermudas and Jeff Kearney with Mentor Maryland DC Organization. It's being presented by Councilman Josh Hastings.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good. All right. So proclamation, this is National Mentoring Month. Whereas during National Mentoring Month, we celebrate the dedicated men and women who volunteer their times, talents, and resources to mentor, teach, and empower young people and those in need of guidance. And whereas mentors come from diverse backgrounds and improve the lives of America's youth, helping them grow into responsible adults. Whereas in Wycomico County and across our country, mentors serve not only as role models for young people, but also as an inspiration to dream big and pursue any goals regardless of circumstance. Whereas the acts of generosity and compassion are a reminder that each of us has the deeper purpose and can make a positive impact in the lives of youth. Now therefore, in recognition of numerous contributions made by mentors in Wycomico County, be hereby resolved, Wycomico County Executive and the County Council proclaim January 2024 as National Mentoring Month, done the second day of January, signed by all members of the County Council and the County Executive. Congratulations. Want to say a few words and then we'll take a picture.
Sure, of course. On behalf of Mentor Maryland DC, we just want to thank everyone here. As we all know, mentoring is so important and our goal is to increase the quality and quantity of mentoring relationships across Maryland. But also, as all of you know, you've all served as informal or formal mentors in your life. So thank you all for the work you're doing for our young people and to ensure that they have success in their careers as well. So thank you all for being here. Yeah.
Take a picture.
Evening, Ms. Hurley. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. At least once a year in the council office, we like to do some cross-training. So Mr. President, with your permission, I'll have Mrs. Lynn Ingold read the agenda items this evening.
All right, great, thank you very much. Ms. Ingold?
Good evening. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing on the purchase of real property known as 1401 Mount Herman Road, Salisbury, Maryland, for use of the Wycomico County Health Department at a purchase price of $3,650,000. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the local newspaper for each of the public hearings this evening. Mr. Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration, is here if there are any questions. And John McClellan with Spirit Van Ness has a presentation.
Good evening. How's everyone? What we'll do is we'll do a brief overview for the public before we do the public hearing. Anything that you might say, we'll call someone to maybe want to make a comment.
Yes.
We appreciate it. If you could introduce yourselves, please, starting with the left, Matthew, thank you.
Matthew McConaughey, I'm the health officer for Wycomico County.
John McClellan with SVN Miller Commercial Real Estate.
Julie Giordano, County Executive.
Bunky Lufman, Director of Administration.
Thank you. Whoever would like to begin.
John? Go ahead. Okay. All right, so good evening. Wanted to come to you before, before you tonight and give the public an opportunity to hear more about the proposed purchase of the Verizon building on 1401, 1401 Mount Herman Road. I've got a few pictures, many of you have seen them, if you've been in Salisbury for any amount of time, anybody driving by has seen the property, although you may notice recently the Verizon picture sign is gone. Now the remnants of Bell Atlantic is underneath the, what's it, I think it says Bell Adel. Somebody forgot the Atlantic, I don't know what happened, but, but anyway. So you've got the property located on Route 50, visibility east and west on Route 50, 5.6 acres total and a 34,000 square foot building. You can see the outline of the proposed property that is actually under contract with the county at this point. The building and the parking lots surrounding it comprise about 250 parking spaces, 34,000 square foot building. And there's an additional three parcels, three separately deeded parcels which could be used for expansion or ultimately could be sold off if that was ever the decision of the council. As I mentioned, it's 34,000 square feet on two levels for elevator access, multiple stairs, multiple entrances, could allow for separate functions. Steel and concrete construction. The building has this kind of a unique feature for this area, duplicate data feeds, one from Mount Herman Road, one from Route 50. So should there ever be a failure of one feed, the building would not lose internet service. New 2020 HVAC system. Roof is approximately seven years old, we have had it inspected, I'll touch on that in a few minutes. There's an onsite generator size to permit ongoing operations, served by city water and sewer. The contract price at $3,650,000 is $108 a square foot. Our recent experience would tell you that new construction would be somewhere between $250 and $300 a square foot plus the cost of land. Construction has really escalated, as you, as you all know, the last couple of years. Building was built custom for Bell Atlantic in 1989, actually was built for the Chesapeake and CMP Telephone Company. This thing is not, can you all hear me?
Further, if you stay back further, it works better, John.
Okay.
Just move it, move it back further. Yes.
That better?
It's fine.
Okay, thank you. So the building, it also has 260 parking spaces. Verizon has vacated the building or has largely vacated the building. You may recall when we were there, the building was full of cubicles and other office equipment. Once the train started and they decided to move the cubicles, there was no stopping them. But their lease does run through October 31 of 2025, they are required to pay rent for that amount of time. The county can collect the rental income during a planning process, working with the Health Department as they move in, as they move forward with their transition. Also, they are considering the donation, I was out there this morning, there's, I didn't count them, but there's 150-plus monitors, computers, keyboards, and mouses, mice? What's it called, plural, mice, mouse? But anyway, they are considering donating those versus the labor and the cost to take those somewhere. And frankly, if half of them don't work, you may be able to use them, the Health Department or someone else, somewhere else in the county could use monitors, nice flat screen, fairly large monitors, could be very useful. Also, we learned there is a UPS or backup power system tied into their entire building for all their computers. They looked at taking it, they'd like to use it, it is too costly to move and to disconnect, so shucks, it's going to stay.
Yeah.
That's a very powerful asset, I do not have a price tag, but it's definitely a bonus. We've done, we've been through some due diligence, as you know, the property went under contract on December 22. We have till February 20 for a 60-day due diligence. Closing could occur anytime before March 21. The inspections we've completed so far is a roof inspection, HVAC, elevator, structural, plumbing, electrical, generator, and environmental phase one. The environmental phase one and electrical and structural are not back, but I've been indicated by all of them verbally, no problems. Pete Matthews has reviewed all of the inspection reports to date, nothing that he considers a glaring problem. It's like a home inspection, you're going to find something, but nothing major. We are requesting a tenant estoppel from Verizon, that's just a document that says the lease is in effect and they are obligated to pay rent, which is obviously an important factor. SVN Management, I've circulated a contract to Ms. Giordano and I'll get one to Mr. Wilbur. We can manage the building so the county doesn't have any, really any hassles, collect the rent, handle all the maintenance, handle the inspections, respond to any problems for $1,000 a month, which would be covered as part of the tenant's operating expenses that they pay into. So there'd be no real cost to the county for doing that, but it'd be one less thing you'd have to worry about. The hurdle building, do you want me to go into that, John, at this point?
You can briefly touch it if you'd like.
One of the, one of the discussions, of course, is if they vacate the hurdle building, what we, what we would do with that. We have inspected the property initially, we're preparing a comprehensive analysis and marketing proposal for the council to be reviewed at a future date. We'll list the property and a widespread marketing campaign to create competition, create any, avoid any appearances of impropriety or dealing with one person. We believe in marketing properties on a widespread basis. James?
I was going to say, so just for clarification for the public, the hurdle building is where the Health Department is currently, right?
At 108.
108.
108 East Main Street.
Okay.
And that would be, that could be marketed and we're very, we're big believers in transparent marketing, so you're not going to deal with just one person, you're going to have competition, hopefully. We've identified several local and regional prospects, in fact, one heard about it today through this public hearing and wanted to know what was going on, and they're from Easton, so definitely some interest in the property.
Good.
We have not concluded evaluation, believe the hurdle coupled with the Verizon rental surplus will lead to a very reduced net acquisition cost for the Verizon building, especially compared to any new construction. Any questions?
No questions. Just so the public realize that we have toward the location as well, that council members have with the executive, and we have, we've seen the property and we've talked to Matthew about as far as what he thinks, how he thinks it'll fit within his program, so we're pretty positive about what we're looking at here. Josh?
Do you need to do a little bit of an explanation for any of the public who may not fully understand why we're going through this process? Is that, if everyone, I know we've talked about this in closed session, but do we need to just talk about why we're looking at a different building and why we're going through this?
I just think that, you know, we're looking, they're, they're looking to try to consolidate some with what they have out at ES Atkins and give themselves a little more room than what there currently is in, in the hurdle building.
We've had a lot of complaints over time with the building, the buildings that we currently utilize either not being for right capacity or potential health concerns or other kind of ways. So that's what I think helped bring all this about to try to think through that.
I think the one, the big, the one big thing you're going to have is the efficiency of the layout. You've got two essentially wide-open 17,000-foot floors versus the hurdle is 30,000 square feet, kind of on three floors of 10. It's just inherently less efficient from a layout standpoint.
Joe?
Yeah.
Appraisals, did you get appraisals?
I did, I just forgot to mention that. Just got it this afternoon. The property has appraised at $3,920,000.
So you're talking about the hurdle building?
No.
No, you're talking about Verizon?
No, I'm sorry, this building. We do not have our valuations down on the hurdle. On the Verizon building is $3,920,000. If you've done any commercial appraisals, they get very conservative, they get very worrisome to value it at any higher than a purchase price. It's kind of the history of banking and if you remember 15 years ago when appraisals were kind of crazy and it led to an economic collapse because appraisals were overstated. So the one thing that is not factored into the appraisal is what I'll call some, there should be some rental surplus, operating expenses are paid at a fixed rate and not reconciled, which more than cover the cost of, the cost of the operating costs. And as a result, you're, you're going to, the county should see a surplus, especially for an unoccupied building. You don't have to clean it, you don't have to, even if it snows, you're not going to plow all 260 spaces, you're going to plow a firetruck access to the, to the doors typically like that.
If it snows.
If it snows, yes.
This might be a question for the executive's office or Matthew, how about retrofitting? So it's, what's, any estimate on the cost of that to, in other words, to make it ready for employees, operational or whatever you want to call it?
I've not talked with engineer or architect yet in regards to that, but the way it's structured, there's main concrete and steel, structural columns throughout the building, so everything else is pretty much can be retrofitted as long as you don't mess with those integral structural pieces. So it should be easily retrofitted, be it with temporary walls, cubicle spaces, or with drywall fittings and studs. It should be easily completed once we sit down, review about what space is needed and how it will be designed for efficient flow and activity.
Desk and office equipment and all that, you don't have any prices on what that's going to be or anything?
Well, mainly we'd probably be bringing a lot of that, that equipment from our current facilities, so we already have that in place. Wouldn't really try to, you know, all new when we have what's good for us now.
Off the, John, you say we're going to get rent from the three, from Verizon, so when you take that off of the purchase price, what's our, what's our price going to be?
I had that in my prior folder. The total revenue over the next, well, starting January 1, we'd take a little bit off, but starting January 1, the total revenue from Verizon's $1.7 million.
But they're going to pay us over the next?
They're going to pay you, yes. Out of that, I project about $300,000 of expenses. Verizon also continues to pay the real estate taxes on the building and the parking lots. The county would undertake, assuming they, well if you want to take them right off the tax rolls, the vacant lots, right now the landlord pays those taxes, but they're the minor part of, of that. So, so in round, in round numbers, a million four would be the, the net revenue to the county against, so you're, you're going to go in with about a $2.2 million purchase price on a 34,000 square foot building and five acres. Pretty good deal.
Thank you.
Last question.
James?
Yeah, so I just wanted to not ask a question, but kind of state the, the parking situation. So we're going to have, how many, 260 parking spots? And we need what, that many downtown right now, so we're going to save a lot of money in, in parking, just parking alone, and alleviate some of the, the parking issues that we have downtown right now, so.
Also save money because of the consolidation from ES Atkins, so we pay rent to ES Atkins, so we'll be pulling that as well.
Yeah, I just.
Also parking spaces that we currently pay for in the parking garage, that will no longer be in expenditure as well either.
I just wanted to state that so that the public knows, so they see what's going on.
Yes, Jeff. So this is also going to increase access and ability to provide services to the public?
Right.
Yes, we're with consolidating to two facilities now where we're able to better provide a multitude of services instead of individual needing multiple rides to different destinations, we can provide more services at one location. We'll also be on short transit route, runs down that road already, so there's transportation avenues. We've already talked internally about how we can structure a, a base to satellite transportation for any clients that may have transportation issues and how to get them to one facility to the other.
Thank you.
Any other comments, discussion? This time, well, yes, John?
That's because I got copies of this package, I'll give you all.
Okay, all right. This time, we open the floor to the public, any public comments, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns in reference to this particular project on purchase on 1401 Mount Herman Road. All right, that concludes the public hearing on the purchase of the real property known as 1401 Mount Herman Road in Salisbury, Maryland. Ms. Hurley, where will we be putting this, on the next, I'm assuming?
If all the inspections come back, you know, favorable to the county, then I, we can certainly move forward with the resolution.
Okay. We'll wait to, you know, we'll wait to, you know, to see what, however you guys move forward and then we'll be glad to get it on the agenda soon as possible. Yep. Thank you, John.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 01 2024, which is amending the FY '24 Budget Position Control Document, Exhibit F, and the Pay and Classification Plan to create the position and title of a court technologist in the Circuit Court for Wycomico County, Maryland. And Ms. Melissa Leahy, Circuit Court Administrator, is here if there are any questions.
This time we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 01 2024. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. This concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 01 2024. Entertaining motion from council to approve Resolution 01 2024. To move? Move. Second? Second. Discussion. Good evening, Ms. Leahy, how are you?
I'm well, how are you? Good evening.
Good, we'll, we'll give you the floor if you'd like it.
Okay. Thank you for hearing our take on this new position. As your briefing book, I believe, tells you this actually is eliminating three current positions and creating a new position. We will have the retirement of our last full-time, real-time transcriptionist in the Circuit Court, and that is sort of the way of the judiciary at this point. And we've been working toward this point over the last few years to increase the technology to pick up the making of the record in the courthouse. This new position will take over the function both of the technology side, making sure that that digital recording system is up and running at all times so that we do have an accurate record, and will also assign out the transcripts that do have to be made. It is still the case in Maryland that an audio transcript is not an official record, so we do have to send those out to transcriptionist parties, pay for those transcriptions as well. So this individual will handle requests for transcripts, hire those out, make sure the system is working, and they'll also assist with additional technologies like remote appearances, Zoom calls, that kind of thing.
Questions? So instead of having someone in the actual courtroom, right, typing in the dictation or whatever, what's, what's the title called? Not a stenographer, no?
Yes, a stenographer. We call them court reporters, but the, the technical term is a stenographer.
Okay, so they won't exist? They'll be more behind the scenes where it's recorded and they'll just simply?
Sadly, yes, yes. We are sad to see our court reporters go, but it is the way that the industry has gone.
Okay. Hopefully they'll accept an audio recording, I don't know why they just don't start accepting audio recordings.
We're, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
It is in the Maryland rules that any official record for appeal does have to be a written transcription, and so again, that's, that's the other function of this job, is to make sure that that communication between our external transcriptionists and the court are handled.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution 01 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried, resolution passes unanimously. Thanks, Ms. Leahy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. President, that's all we have this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ingold. This time we open the floor for public comments. If you have any public comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. This concludes public comments, council comments?
Awesome, New Year.
James?
I'm, I'm hoping everybody had a good New Year's Eve and everyone's arrived and got home alive and, and I hope everyone started off on the right foot.
Thank you. Anyone else? Josh?
Happy New Year, go Ravens.
Yeah. Say that, huh? Anyone else?
I just want to wish everybody Happy New Year. Yeah, it's, I think four of us just finished our first year and we're still here.
We're still here.
Yeah, man. Yeah. All good.
Happy New Year.
I just hope that people will show more love, kindness, and respect, and do away with hate this year coming. And I think if people do that, this would be a better place to live. That's all I have to say.
Agree with you on that, Shani. No kidding. Any other comments? Joe?
I just want to say Happy New Year also. Thank you.
This time, I entertain a motion to adjourn from legislation session, to go into open work sessions followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-305b, 1 and 8, as follows, to discuss a personnel matter pertaining to the Deputy Director of Public Works to protect the privacy of the individual, consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation to protect the county's legal position, to discuss a personnel matter pertaining to independent legal counsel to protect the privacy of the individual, discuss a personnel matter involving a performance evaluation to, again, protect the privacy of the individual, and a closed administrative session pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-104, to discuss internal auditor projects. It's a motion. To move? Move. Second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Legislative session is adjourned. First item on the open work session is the capital improvement program. And Recreation and Parks and Tourism and Civic Center. Good evening.
Hey, Steve.
Good evening.
How are you guys doing?
Very well.
Just so the public knows, if you could introduce yourself for those who are watching on PAC 14.
Sure. Steve Miller, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism.
Chuck Russo, Deputy Director, Recreation, Parks, Tourism.
Katie Rouse, Deputy Director, Recreation, Parks, Tourism, and the Civic Center. You have in front of you our fiscal year '25 to '29 CIP plan, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay.
Yeah, where are we on the boat ramp for Pirate's Wharf?
So we've applied for funding for Phase 2, which includes the boat ramp, so we hope to hear about that federal funding source probably in March, and then we would be in the permitting process, so we've re-initiated that permitting process. So I think realistically, we're probably looking at calendar year '25 to, to actually see it. I think it'd be a push to get the permits and get all that done in this coming annual year, so, but I think calendar year '25 hopefully is when we see it.
Okay. Another question, the, for capital improvements, we have a lot of baseball fields in the, in the county, and I, you know, you've heard it, and I just don't know what the county thinks about investing money in some of these other fields that we already have to retrofit them, to, to allow their sports, maybe like lacrosse, or, or soccer, or any other sport, just because I don't know what the uses of all these fields are. If we have a field already, I, it would be nice to see if we can't, you know, get some lights up so we can, we can allow, you know, get people to play other sports, because we have a lot of baseball fields. I don't know if you've, if, if anyone's gone in that direction.
Yeah, we've, we've done that on a number of occasions where, prior to Harmon Field, we, we converted some tennis courts to pickleball courts, and then, of course, we renovated Harmon for that type of use. And so we're always trying to look at how facilities are being used, and that evolves over time, and as that changes, we're certainly willing to change with that. And, and then we've also got some projects in here that are new projects that, that could address some, some needs as well. But is there something specific as far as a need that you had in mind, or just in general?
It was just kind of in general. Just kind of in general.
No, we're, we're very open to that. If, if facilities aren't being used to their fullest capacity, if there's other uses, we'd certainly be open to that.
Okay.
Any other questions from anybody? Go ahead, Josh.
I was just going to bring up the question, I know there's, I don't know where things landed as far as, I know there was like five months ago, a little bit of questions about Cove Road and what was happening down that way, I guess, is, what is the latest on that? And forgive my ignorance, because I haven't been paying attention, it's not my area, but I, I know enough folks that go down and utilize it that they will be asking me, so.
Sure. So there's a couple of things that happened at Cove Road and Roaring Point. One was the shoreline restoration projects where we had the breakwater systems that were installed, so those are actually installed and are functioning. We're working with MDE on the plantings, that was one of the areas that we heard quite a bit from the public, and we're working with MDE on trying to relocate those plantings to be more, or out of the way of where the public typically is on the beach and more on the dune areas, so that's a work in progress. As far as the expansion, we purchased the adjacent properties at Cove Road, so now we're working with both FEMA and MDE to figure out what is it that we can physically do as we develop those properties and kind of make the two into one contiguous property, so that's a work in progress right now, but that's, that's going on as we speak. So hopefully, over the next year, we'll get a better sense of what we're able to do, and then we'll have a design plan and bid it out and, and so on. Is that, answer your question?
Thank you.
Very good.
I had two questions, but Josh took my first. Thanks, Josh. The Mason Dixon Sports Complex, the $4 million for that, what, is there a timeline, or?
So I think we've put it in '425 as far as in that CIP, and I know there's, there's other meetings to, to happen as far as how that gets prioritized. So we're working with the state delegation to see if, if the state funding can be there, because I think that, that will be the, really the thing that propels this. So I, it all depends on that. I think if, if we can get state funding, I think that can accelerate and happen sooner than later. If not, then I think it'll be a slower road. So I, I hope soon, but it's all based on funding. Katie, I don't know if you want to fill in on that, or Julie?
Yeah, I'm, it's number two on our list. So number one was the hangar at the airport for 14.3 in the governor's budget, and then I sat with him and went over it with the Chair of Appropriations as well on both sides, and the Budget Secretary. So Mason Dixon is number two. Delegate Anderton is spearheading that as well on appropriations.
Thank you.
Ms. James?
Yes, so two things. You have the Nanacoque Harbor improvements, and then you have the Cedar Hill Marine Park Restoration. What's going to entail with the, what, what are we spending our money on for that, those two projects?
So the majority of the money on both of those is actually waterway improvement funding, and that is for dredging, the engineering, so you have the Cedar Hill. Right now, we have done the Nanacoque Harbor engineering for the dredging, and then we'll do the actual Nanacoque Harbor dredging itself. And then in fiscal year '25, we'll do engineering for the Cedar Hill dredging, and then we'll do the Cedar Hill dredging scheduled for fiscal year '26. So that's that part of it, and then there's also some county money. What that is going to go into is some improvements around the harbor. We've, over the last few months, we've started to get even more in touch with those residents out there about their needs and what they're looking for. So we're just looking at, like, replacing boards with like a better type of material that's more slip resistant, that's more, will last longer, the wood that's out there. There's, you know, as technology's moved along, there's nicer things you can put out there that will last longer, so working hand in hand with them to do some improvements out there that will really increase use, and then also increase accessibility to, for other people out there as well, so.
Are we, are we getting power out to some of the slips?
I think.
That's something we've discussed.
Yeah.
Yeah, and particularly in Nanacoque, where, where that's not, that doesn't exist, so that, that's a funding question, but I think that is a need that we've identified as, or something that people would want to see.
Okay, okay.
And we've also looked at, we have a problem sometimes with abandoned boats out there, so depending on how far the funding would go, it would be potentially equipment to allow our staff to be able to remove those abandoned boats, and also potentially a fenced-in storage area for those types of things, for temporary storage, for when we need to remove things out of the water until we can break them down and get rid of them.
Awesome.
So just things to make that a better space there for everybody that's using it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
One more. Joe, looks like he has a question. No, you're good. So the escalators at the Civic Center, I remember last year we approved some funding for that. Where are we at on that project?
Sure, I, I can give a quick update. They were completed and passed inspection prior to Salisbury University's commencement. They had to do, come back and do some repair work and some fixes with the amount of people that were on them, tension, pressure, kind of things with those. The technology is so different than what we had before, but both are operational, working fine through governor's challenge, so the company that did the install made the necessary repairs in a timely manner, and at this point, they seem to be functioning perfectly.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Were they the original escalators?
Yeah, they were original.
Yeah, did we get our money's worth out of them?
Yeah, I think so.
Very much. Good, thank you.
Shani, what was that basketball court you were talking about with the fence?
Indian Village. No, with the fence.
Yeah, yeah.
I understood why, the lighting.
Billy Jean Jackson?
They couldn't, couldn't do it no better than they did.
Oh, okay.
Because the lighting protect, avoided them from coming back, and I explained it to the people who were questioning it. But I do want to know when the, in case I'm asked, the basketball court at Indian Village, when, when is that going to begin?
That was moved, that was moved up to this year, so that'll be happening this spring.
Okay, and then next year, your next budget year, I like to see equipment, big equipment, not the little teeny stuff that needs to be in, in the dump, I call it. It looked like child, it'd get injured on it. It looks, it looks old and worn out. I think the swings are safer, and I think we need to upgrade that, and I don't know how the community can help, you know, to help raise funds for that playground, but I think sometime we may need ownership of it, too. And then Emerson Holloway Playground, I think you did away with that, correct? It's no longer, there's no equipment or nothing out there. I forget the roof is on.
Might have to child-hitting.
Yeah, I don't recall that.
There's a playground out there called Emerson Holloway.
Yeah, yeah, under the park.
But it's, it's completely empty, and it's become a place for hanging out.
Yeah, I knew there was an issue with folks hanging out kind of at that entrance, and that, that was something we were trying to address and, and work with law enforcement.
So, yeah, so I just don't want to see it, because his name was attached to it, you know?
Right.
And now it's, it seemed to be abandoned.
Yeah.
So I don't know what you would do with that property.
Yeah, but as far as the equipment itself, I don't think we've done anything there.
There's no, there's no equipment at all.
Okay.
None, none whatsoever, so the children wouldn't go there. That's why Indian Village is so important, because that's the only playground in that area.
Sure.
Yeah. And Doverdale, are you responsible for that, or the city?
The city.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I'll just ask, the playground equipment for, in Powellville, that's happening, Atkin's Mill, right? Just making sure. Yep? And I just wanted to state this, that I think I've heard as the West Metro core property, I'm just going to state this, that there's people that would rather it be farmland, so I don't know, I'm just saying, because there are people that would rather it be farmland, and we have a lot of parks, and I know that we have to build something, I just don't know if it has to be as expensive as it is. But anyway, I just wanted to state that. Thanks. I'm done.
The only question I have, Steve, is actually more in general than it is a specific issue, because what I've noticed, and I've noticed it throughout the capital improvement program, is that we seem to have a huge dependency right now through the overall capital improvement plan. We seem to have a really huge dependency on Pago, which is a really huge concern. The bonding's about, I guess, 10.7 million.
And so Pam probably would be the best person. We do have Charles here if you want to ask a financial. These guys are just here to talk about the project.
I get it. I, I don't, I don't have any questions just now, because we'll have a few work sessions to get into the rest of it, but you have the roof that's $4 million, and I get it, because I understand how, how expensive roofs can be. So that's about, it's about, of course, about 40% of the total bonding that we're doing. And then there's about 4.44 or 4.5 that the, you know, the Civic Center Recreation Parks and Tourism that you are looking for, for Pago. And the council is really concerned about Pago this year, extremely concerned about Pago.
Yeah.
So I think once we get into the nuts and bolts of how we're going to evaluate the entire CIP, there might be some expectations that, that there may have to be some harder decisions made as far as which projects will or will not have the higher priority. The other couple of things that, that concern me, and this would be more, I guess, in line with something that we can address with Pam or with Chuck, but a couple of things that have always really bothered me, but are becoming more prevalent as every year goes by, I think there are too many, too many sources that are strictly listed as other or else TBD, to be determined. And I don't know how, whether it's a plan or whether it's a budget, I think sometimes your, your plan ought to reflect a realistic budget. And I say that because when you have some projects where you've got $500,000, that's just to be determined, I, I don't know how, like in 2026, you then say it's 4.08 million to be determined. What are we really doing when we have $4 million in a 2026 CIP that is to be determined? We don't even know what it is. We don't know where it's coming from. So that's a real concern of mine. If any of the TBD, if any of the to be determined is state-related, I would really like to have some distinction between whether it's a to be determined, because it's, we're waiting for state funding to see if it, the state will accept it or not, that would be helpful for us. The loading zone that you have here is another example of that. It's 200,000 with 100 coming from the county. I can understand that for 2025, but then 2026 is 2 million to be determined, and it's very difficult, I think, to ask anyone to commit to $100,000 or 200,000 if the follow-through is a 2 million to be determined. Where is it? Because who wants to get involved? I think we're finding the same thing, and this is not just relevant, relative to you. We're seeing the same problem with the Board of Education, where 2025 is 4 million, but we know it's a $40 million project, and there's no record, there's no reference whatsoever to '26, '27, '28, or '29 on what we're going to do after we make that initial $4 million conviction in 2025. So it's, it may be a, a planning document, but it's awful difficult to plan when you don't really know what your true numbers are going to be. And that in itself, with what we're seeing with the Board of Education, until I think we realistically have those numbers set aside, it makes it very difficult for the county to know and the council to know what we are really going to be committing over these next five years.
Yeah.
Realistically.
Yeah.
So.
Can I speak from our financial point, just on our financial part? So as far as our Pago goes, we do look at our projects very closely to see what we can do, and we have, in the past, I feel, done a really good job of leveraging the Pago funds as far as matches for grants and things like that. Some of the things, particularly the Civic Center, it's just a very old building, there's been no money put into it, and so now we're kind of having, having to face facts with that as far as the roof. That's been on the CIP for, I would say, probably 10 years. We've just been delaying it, so we've gotten to the point where we can't delay that anymore. And then as far as to be determined and things like that, especially in the future years, some of those things, and we've had this problem in the past, those projects just may not happen if we can't find that money. So a lot of times when we're using to be determined, it's basically, we're trying to give ourselves a chance to find the money, and sometimes those things may not happen if we can't find the money. So that's generally how we're using it. I think our number for to be determined this year has to do with Mason Dixon. There's a lot of players in that as far as the state, the Board of Education, the Town of Delmar, so I think we were leaving ourselves some, some room there, hoping that we could maybe pull some of those funding sources together. So that's how we use it, I'm sure it's different for every department, but that's kind of just from our point. I won't speak for Pam as far as the county Pago. I can, I have 29 projects on here that I have to keep track of, so I know that they have multiple more, that they're trying to fit all the puzzle pieces together. But from our standpoint, for our department, that's kind of where we are with those two items, so.
And we respect your, your challenge with, with deferred maintenance. I mean, I do get that. I, I think sometimes that we still have to be realistic as where this money's going to come from, and the actual, with the, with the Pago on, on the Mason Dixon Project, that's about a million and a half that's coming from our savings account. That's not for like, to, to take care of emergencies that we have, that's to begin new projects. And so the question is, are we spending beyond our means, not only on deferred maintenance, but on new, new projects as well? What, what's that balance going to be? There's a lot of people that know that when they buy a house, they have to plan for a new roof in 20 years, and I think we have to sort of try to follow that same principle. And I think we have to sort of try to follow that same principle. Anybody else?
Good point. Good question.
Yes, Jim.
I just want to say, thank you for the work you did at Pirate's Wharf. Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't that a result of putting together multiple grants and?
Yeah, about eight of them.
I think the phrase you used was cobbling it together.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, thank you for the comment. And what we've told folks in the public, we hope people have gotten out there to enjoy it. That's why we opened it when we did. But it's going to get better as we go. We're adding stuff as we speak. We're finishing up some trails this winter, we're adding some signage, and it will get better as we go. And that was a lot of hard work from a lot of people, some of whom you're looking at and others in the department where, it's a story I like to tell just because it's what we do. And Katie kind of referenced it with, with the department. We're ambitious, we want to get things done, we want to continue to improve things. And so in doing that, we got $100,000 originally from the county that, to get us going, we leveraged that into a grant, which we leveraged into other grants, and now we're about $4 million, so. So the council's been very supportive of that project, but we'll continue to push the envelope as best we can to find sources that are not the county, because I can appreciate your concern and I know there's a lot of priorities and a lot of challenges throughout the county. So we'll do the best we can to lessen that load on the county where we can and hopefully continue to move things in a good direction, so. But thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a lot of respect for how you manage your money and how you handle your business, we really do. Excellent departments, all of them.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Yes, Charlie?
I just want to mention, we can have the public hearing on the capital improvement program. That would include everything in the capital improvement program at our next meeting, January the 16th at 10:00 a.m.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We do not, we don't take comments from the crowd, sorry.
I didn't have a comment, I just, I don't know what Pago means.
Pago is the term that we usually use for money that we have, sort of like in our reserves, that we will use it for, we'll spend it. It's sort of what we consider to be spending down your reserves.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, excuse me, next item on the agenda is a proposed legislation on the approval of contracts, leases and other contractual obligations. I hear real quick.
Is it number two? It's number two.
Yeah, we're at session number two. I think the idea here is, if I understand correctly, is that there's concerns about how we want to look at doing leases, I believe. We've seen it in the past and we've seen it more recently where there has been some concern over the fact that, as it is today, in order for the council, and in my opinion, for the council and the public to become involved in any type of purchase in Wycomica County or any type of contract or MOU, some of the priorities are that it has to be at least a minimum of one year. But we've had it in the past where leases have been put together for a particular building that was done for 11 months. And that was specifically to write the contract, get everything done, and it really never came before the public or this council. That was several years ago. But more recently, with the Jeeps in the Quarry issue, we came up with a 364-day contract as opposed to 365-day contract, which was a year. And the real purpose of that was really to simply get the MOU signed. And I think in a sense, that sort of ignored what the council's responsibility and the public, giving the public proper input on this project as well. So this is a couple of legislative bills that have been proposed so that we can reduce that number from a year to six months, so that anything that's six months or more has to come before the council. And we're hoping that might, it shouldn't hurt, I don't think, the processes that are already in place in Wycomica County. It's just that it's something that will then require more public input and council input in trying to evaluate what's best for the county as a whole and the taxpayers of Wycomica County. Any comments from council members?
Yeah, I had, I had a thought. I, it actually just occurred to me. I don't, six months, year, you know, I was thinking, you know, what about having like a, like a, requiring some sort of public hearing for it instead? I mean, I don't know if a year would make a difference from six months because, I mean, you know, you can structure the contract down, you know what I mean? But if you, if you have a public comment for, you know, to give the public, because that's ultimately, I think, what I think really stirred it up was, I guess, the public not giving that chance to say anything before an MOU or anything. And I just thought maybe just a, like, when we just purchased this property, we required a, where we, you know, we didn't, we weren't required to, but we thought it was a great idea to have some sort of a public input. And I don't think, I don't think any, any elected official wants to do anything without the public knowing. I just think it would be nice to be able to say, hey, look, you know, this is what I want to do. We're going to have a public hearing on it. If you agree with it, disagree with it, here it is. So that's my thought on it.
Or a public hearing for?
Like for, for a contract. Because I mean, like this, is this going to affect every, like, this will affect, I guess, you know, I didn't even think about it, but it, does it affect the Sheriff's Department and every other department? Because I know that we have an MOU right now with the Safari and the Quarry. I'm just curious on if it's going to affect everything.
It won't affect the Safari and the Quarry as far as I understand. I mean, I think we're having trouble getting, I don't know if we even have a confirmed, I guess we, do we have a confirmed MOU or under contract or anything but that, Mr. Wilber? There isn't any, but from what I understand, it's still changing.
I think there's discussion about an addendum to it.
What I mean is, for anything under a year, you know, not that we have like a council, I mean, I think it's good that the executive branch has that ability to, you know, have a contract right now. Because I understand in business that you need to be able to make a decision right away if you have to. But I also understand that, you know, it's good for the public to hear it. So I think it would be, like, it would be good to have a public hearing and then, then a decision.
Are you planning on having meetings once a week?
No, no, no. Well, see, I don't know, I'm just bringing the idea up.
My point is though, is that you guys meet twice a month, so a lot of times that would hold up a lot of different things. So there's different contracts that we're doing every single day.
Right.
I mean, I think Mr. Dallas is looking at contracts almost every single day.
Yes, all the time.
So it's a lot, it's a lot more than just, you know, being, and I understand, you know, the, the public wanting to be involved and knowing what's going on and that kind of stuff. It's just, you know, in a public hearing type sense, you guys meet twice a month. So in doing it in council chambers would.
We, we meet every other week. Well, not just every week, I mean, it's every other week, which isn't really a long time, a two-week, a two-week, well, you know, 14 days is not a long time, time period of delay on a contract, I don't think.
I mean, it sometimes is. There are days that contracts come across my desk and I have till the end of the day to get it signed.
Now, I would.
We're talking over $50,000 to.
Hold on, I wasn't suggesting that the council hold every single public hearing. I mean, you could have a, I mean, I assume you could have a public hearing anywhere, anytime.
Whenever.
Yeah, just whenever.
Not necessarily during council.
I'm not saying that we need to hamstring it to a, to a council meeting.
I, I understand what you're saying with the public hearing because that's what you want is the transparency, Jane.
Yeah, yeah.
But unfortunately, you have to advertise public hearings and you have to schedule it. And that would, that would, unfortunately, that would, that'd be a lot of the process. We're trying to create something that's going to work for both branches of government and we really don't want to try to create anything that's going to muddy the waters in trying to get business done. And unfortunately, we don't know how many contracts are really out there on a regular basis, over $50,000. And by making it something six months instead of a year is really muddying the waters. I don't anticipate it's going to be a lot.
Obviously, we'll see over time.
Right.
My comment would be that if we look at what other counties are doing, the year seems to be the standard on the other county Executive Council counties. I think the idea behind that is, a budget is passed, it's a fiscal year, you know, the money's allocated, and then the administration spends the money. If it gets into multi-year, then it's got to come to the council. And that seems to be throughout the other counties, the same concept. It definitely will affect Wreckin' Parks, Airport.
Shutterlands, Library.
Well, it can affect every department, but I'm thinking of the contracts that are more numerous, that are over 50.
But there's not even that many contracts, Mr. Wilber, that we have approved on the year basis. I mean, I can't think of that many contracts the council has.
The multi-year, right.
The multi-year or even anything over one year. I can't really tell you how many contracts we've had to approve.
I think what has happened is contracts have been written for the year, you know, and it's just stayed away from the multi-year concept. Now, we're going to get into writing contracts for six months. We'll see.
Why would you? I mean, there would not be any real need to do that. Wouldn't be any real need to do that. We're not saying that your contract has to be six months. We're just saying that if it's more than six months, then there should be probably more public input and, and input from the council as well.
So, you know, I think if you pass it with six months in it, we'll see how much extra comes to the council.
If it creates a problem and we find we've really created a stopgap here that's not going to work, yeah, anything can be, can be reworked. I agree with you.
Some contracts do have a time fuse on them and they, they need to be moved rapidly through legal to the executive for signature. You were discussing that. Whether that's going to become an issue, we will find out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That's, that's my only concern, is that if this is creating a real boondoggle for how, how we're able to do business, we don't want to do it. Yeah. It's not so much the lease part of it, it's contract part of it that I have some concern about.
So I'll just state the elephant in the room, that, you know, the Safari in the Quarry is really what brought this up. What assurances do we have that we can be more transparent in the future? Because we, we don't want to have people come in and, and upset with, with us and about not being transparent about an MOU. And I, I mean, I, I see why it happened. There was a lot of contention back then and, and things are, hopefully, we could turn over a new leaf, new year, new us. And I, I hope that, I hope that our relationships as a whole has gotten better. And I agree with Shaney on, we need less hate, more love, you know? And, and I think, I think, I hope going forward that we don't have to do this, we don't have to think about this.
Well, and just, if, if, and I don't know where, what sparked this idea, if it was the Safari at the Quarry, that's fine.
That's what I led with, just to clarify, that's what I led with, that it was Safari in the Quarry plus a few years back, there was 11-month lease that we were committed to that actually cost us a lot of money and was never, was never used except for costing the funds. But go ahead.
Right. Well, no, I was just going to say, so Safari at the Quarry will not potentially ever be a year-long MOU again. So if we were to have a successful event and council felt that it was a successful event, it would probably fall more so underneath the contracts like how people rent the Civic Center. You know what I mean? Like, so if we have monster trucks, the contract is for two days for monster trucks. It's not from the day that we sign it, you know, to the day the event is done.
I'm going to clarify, the monster trucks is for the Civic Center.
Right. Right. Yeah, no, no, not at Safari at the Quarry. No, 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 not there, no, no. So my point is that it probably, there's no monster trucks at the Quarry, no. No, in the Civic Center. But I'm just using that as an example. So it probably would never go underneath, you know, it wouldn't go as that. I just, as any reactive legislation, I just, there are a lot of questions that have been asked from my department heads, which is why I provided them for you. I was still getting them towards the end of this meeting or towards the start of this meeting. So I would ask, this is a work session, so, and they've been sent to you electronically. So just look at them, you know, just things to think about, very similar to what we did with the vehicle legislation. So, you know, just, just questions on different things, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to say, I agree with Jane's, transparency is very important to the public and that's what a lot of us campaigned on. And so anything that is going to affect anybody's peace, quiet, they need to know if it's going to be disturbed. And I think that they shouldn't hear it on Facebook, the newspaper, they should be contacted first. Because a lot of people do not look at PAC 14, a lot of people don't read the newspaper, but it's some kind of way communication should get out and let, especially taxpayers, homeowners. I did go out and looked at that space and I'm trying to figure out a Safari, because I look for Safari to be animals, ducks, and I ain't see a duck, geese, deer or nothing out there. So I don't know what excitement would be.
Just the vegetation.
But anyway, I just like.
There's going to be wild animals out there?
I thought it was supposed to say the Safari and, you know, my book was not lions and tigers and bears, but.